All right, welcome everyone to the Town of Wakefield Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, September 11th, 2024. Reminder that this meeting is being recorded. It will be available on the town's website in a couple of days. I'm going to start with a roll call. Dave Hadfield.
Here.
Chip Tarbell. I see you.
Yeah.
Yep, Joe Pride.
Yeah.
Mickey Fielding.
Here.
Assumi Humphries.
Yeah.
Kirsten Brown.
Here.
Greg Demersion.
Here.
And my name's Tom Lucy. Obviously, I am here. With that, I'm going to ask the clerk to read the legal notice.
Sure thing. Consistent with the governor's orders, extended certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort we've made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. If you do not have a camera or mic thrown on your computer, you may use the phone dial in number one three zero one seven one five eight five nine two, meeting ID eight one one five seven two five eight four zero three, passcode three 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 seven five two. Please use, please only use dial in our computer, not both, as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded in compliance, in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. This location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or language free, language assistance free of charge upon request. If you're a person with a disability and require information or materials in an alternate format, or if you require any accommodations, please contact the disability coordinator, William Town Engineer at seven eight one two four six six three eight zero eight as far in advance of the event as possible. Every effort will be made to grant your requests. Advanced notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove an accessibility barrier for you. One, continued hearings. Two, twenty-five dash nine, William Kong and Shifang N. Application for a determination and or finding with respects to a continuation and extension of non-conforming uses under Article Nine, Section one ninety dash fifty of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to construct in addition onto an existing single-family dwelling. The property shown as map thirty-nine A Lot Posel zero C eight of the assessors map is located at one forty-one Montrose Avenue, three twenty-five dash ten, John Mangano and John O'Neil, application for determination and a finding with respects to a continuation and extension of non-conforming uses under Article Nine, Section one ninety dash fifty of the Wakefield zoning bylaws to raise an existing single-family dwelling and reconstruct a new single-family dwelling. The property is shown as map fourteen B Lot Posels nineteen eight two of the assessors map. And it's located at three nine five Vernon Street, Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Me. I thought I turned off the chime when people came in.
Done.
Done. Okay. So, all right. On continued cases, the first case, twenty-four ten, the residents at the Hahn LLC. Mr. Panos, the attorney for the project, wrote me earlier today, saying they will not be appearing tonight. They've got some work to do, and we'll be back in touch. So, we're going to ask that this matter be continued to the September twenty-fifth hearing.
Mr. Chair, I move that we, um, sorry, did somebody have a comment?
Well, we make the motion if someone has a comment, we'll, I'll.
Oh, okay. No, I thought somebody wanted. Yep, I thought someone was trying to speak. Okay. I move that we continue this matter to our September twenty-fifth, twenty-two four meeting.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any comment or discussion? Hearing seeing non-regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yeah.
Mickey?
Yes.
I vote yes. Matter's continued to September twenty-fifth. I had not heard from Mr. Haverty. Mr. Haverty, are you here? He indicated at the last meeting, if recall, that he didn't think he would be here, but I wanted to give him a chance. Seeing that he's not here, I'm going to move that this, uh, I think we should have a motion to move this matter to September twenty-fifth as well.
And Mr. Chair, I move that we continue this matter at thirty-two Nahan Street to our September twenty-fifth, twenty-two four meeting.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing seeing non-regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip? Chip, yes?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
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 And I vote yes as well. Matter's continued to September twenty-fifth. Next case up is case twenty-five dash three, twenty-five dash four, twenty-five dash five, thirty-three Water Street LLC, application for special permit and site plan approval. McGrail on the screen. You sent some material in on Friday. So, uh, you can walk, you want to walk us through that?
I'd be happy to. Yes, yes, I would. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Attorney Brian McGrail, representing the applicant, thirty-three West Water Street LLC, uh, for property at thirty-three West Water Street. With me tonight is, uh, somewhere on the screen is Marvin St. Jean, who's the principal of the entity or, um, uh, in control of the entity, John Ogren from Hayes Engineering, uh, who's a site civil engineer, and Peter Sandus and Andrew Jones from Phoenix Architects. Um, it's just to refresh the board memory, this site is currently a mixed-use church and residential use. Um, we're proposing eleven residential units, a makeup of three one bedrooms. Um, um, I'll get to them. Andrew will cover the makeup, but it's a total of, we're proposing a total of eleven units. Um, the density, as we talked about, allows for thirteen units. We're at eleven. Um, are on the agenda for the next traffic advisory committee meeting, as the chair knows. He's been part of the correspondence with Lieutenant Anderson in that regard, anticipating that will happen either late September or early October. Um, what we have for you tonight is you would ask us to provide a height context plan, uh, for the building, uh, as it relates to, uh, the neighborhood, and also to provide a footprint plan and some up-updated architecturals. Um, so, I think I'm going to start, if I may, with Andrew Jones on the updated architecturals, and then I'll get into the height context plan. Um, so, Andrew, uh, if he can share his screen, Mr. Chair, if that would be okay?
Please do.
And Andrew, if you could get into the unit makeup, um, as far as bedroom counts?
Absolutely. Thank you, Brian. Um, good evening, Mr. Chair and Board members. Andrew Jones, representing Phoenix Architects. Just give me a moment, I'll pull up the new PDF. Can I go on and say?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So, um, just to, um, answer Brian's last comments, it's five one-bedroom and six two-bedroom units, total of eleven units. Um, one thing that you'll see updated from this packet from the last one is a streetscape graphic. So, what we did was based on the site context study that you'll see, um, from John Ogren after me. What we did was we created streetscape, kind of looking at the masses of the buildings around us. Um, one showing with the original church, which you can see in the bottom, um, and then also one showing now our overlaid building, um, that we're proposing. So, you can start to see that the heights of relating to the other buildings around it. Um, and then, besides that, there was just some small adjustments that we made to the ADA, um, unit. Um, I know, I remember Kazumi mentioned in a couple of doors and stuff like that, that we cleaned up, and also the double wall oven. Um, one thing I did actually miss, and we'll make sure to add it, was we talked about bike storage in this bottom left-hand corner of the parking garage. So, we'll make sure to add that next time around, but we do plan to add some bike storage in that area. Um, besides that, everything else is the same, so.
Well, Andrew, can you go back to the, the, the height and blow that up? So, members of the board and members of the public can?
Absolutely.
Take a minute to look at that.
Yep, and I got the heights too. So, if there's any heights of surrounding buildings that you'd like to compare.
We're gonna, we're gonna get into that. I, I want to point out, I'm glad you brought this back up, if I can, Mr. Chair, that when you look at our building, where the car is to the right of it, that's our parking lot. So, the, the building that's next to us is, that's the rear of that building on the, um, abutting street. It's not directly next to us. Um, and then, where the truck is, that building is also on the abutting street in their parking lot, it butts our parking lot. So, um, so that, that is, so there's a real space here between our building, the next building, if you could show them, is way down right there.
What's that to mention, Andrew?
Of which building? The one right here?
No, just the distance between your proposal and the, and the next one that's on West Water Street.
That's probably a John Ogren question.
Yeah, that is. I, I, I can't get your.
John, can you answer the chair on that approximately?
If you don't have it, ballpark it, and then you can bring it back.
Yeah, give me, give me one second. Um, do you want between the distance kind of along West Water Street between our proposed building and the next building down the street?
Please.
Yeah, that's about a hundred and fifty feet.
Uh, do you have more to report on this, Brian, before I ask board members if they have questions?
Yeah, this kind of, I think will be helpful if we go right into the height context plan, because that's going to show you the height of the buildings. Uh, John, do you want to share that, or do you want me to? I have it handy.
I.
I got it.
Okay.
Blow this up. Um, so, I guess to start, um, to orient, um, this is our building right here in the square. And our proposed building, so the current building, the church building, is thirty-three feet tall, and our proposed building is thirty-four point five. So, very similar. Um, and then, I guess, starting, um, we'll start with the building furthest away that we just went over. So, here's the space between our building and that building. That building is thirty-six feet tall. The building, this is the parking lot that I was talking about for the building that's on Richardson Ave, that serves the Richardson Ave. Um, that's a, I believe that this is an eight-unit building. Pretty sure it's eight. I did the permitting on this. I'm pretty sure it's eight. Um, it might be four. It might be a four. Um, I'll clarify that before we start, but I think it's a four, not an eight. Um, in any event, um, that building's height is forty-four feet compared to our thirty-four point five. Uh, then coming down, thirty Richardson is thirty-five feet. Thirty-two Richardson is actually thirty-seven feet, building right behind us, which is taller than us. Thirty-four, thirty-six Richardson right here is thirty feet. This house next to us is twenty-five feet. This is the Tonoe Building, which is across from us. That, as you can see, is sixty feet, plus or minus. Then this is, other building across the street is a little one-story industrial-type building. I think it's like manufacturing. It's twelve feet tall. It's a single-story building. And that brings us back around again. You can actually see also, I want to point out, this overhead shows that actually these buildings that are but us on Richardson Ave are really close to our property line.
Brian, is that height the main roof or the steeple? On the left-hand side?
It's the main roof.
The main roof.
Do you have a height on that steeple?
I can get it. It was like, I think forty-two feet roughly to the top. I can get you the exact.
Mike, my only concern is that you went a little bit closer to the house on the left. So, he lost a little bit of space, and he lost, I mean, the building got a little higher.
I'm gonna, what I'll go to now, if I may, Mr. Chair, is the footprint plan, because that might help.
Yep, please do.
Okay, because this is all the information that the board had asked for, so to kind of, um, fulfill our obligation on what was requested, uh, the overlay plan. And Joe's right, we did go a little closer there. You'll see it. So, this is our overlay plan. The pink or purple is the church building, and the tan is our proposed building.
Assuming I see your hand up?
Um, I think I asked this one on the last meeting, but I wanted to see, I was looking at the architectural drawings, and you see on the elevation showing, um, the houses on the West Water Street, but what I wanted to see was that the thirty-two Richard, Richardson Avenue House, how close that is, if you can add it to one of your, like, side elevation.
I think John has it right here. See it?
No, but I wanted to see, like, architecturally, like, on, um, like, at, on the architectural, do you show actual where the houses are? Not, not on the plan.
So, not, you didn't want the distance that we put. You want to see it, um, like in, like, in an elevation?
Yeah.
Um, Andrew, do you understand the request?
So, are we looking at, uh?
Because, so, Andrew, if you go to your, um, like, either propose the right elevation or the left elevation?
Yep.
And then just add that thirty-two Richardson Avenue House, like, where exactly that is? And, because I want to see where, like, their window line compared to your window line?
Yeah, we, we can definitely do our best, just based on what's there. I can't promise a hundred percent accuracy there. Obviously, the distances between and stuff like that, but we, we can definitely do our best to represent, uh, side elevation showing that building behind and ours, for sure.
Okay, yeah, because those, the unit on the backside of your building is gonna face that house right there, and it's kind of shame if you have to close the, the blind all the time. I just want to see how close that house is.
Understood. We can do that.
Thank you.
Dave?
Yeah, just piggybacking that. Can you put that plot plan back up? I mean?
Yep.
I think it's important to really, for everyone to understand what we're looking at here.
Which one do you want, Dave?
The overlay one, the overlay one. What was the, what's there today and what you're proposing?
You got it. Hold on.
Yeah. So, does that say you're eight feet from the other structure on thirty-two Richardson?
John?
Yeah, it's, the building to building is, is eight point four feet, and then there's a, a stair off the back there, and that's four point three.
Guys, you could reach out and shake their hands.
Well, they're really the same distance from our property line that we are to theirs.
I understand. But, look at the footprint. And, and the other part. We talked about last time, some green space, and
Yeah.
maybe losing a couple of units, and, you know, you know, there were other things brought up at the last meeting besides what you're showing tonight. So, the overlay really illustrates that for everyone, right? That you've made a, you're proposing a bigger building, that's a lot closer to lot line, has no open green space or amenity space, and you're basically right up against the lot line, as they are, but they're pre-existing, right? And you're choosing to build something new, and you have the option of not building right up to the lot line, and moving that building or making it smaller, so it's not close to the lot line like that.
Yeah.
I mean, just, I'm just making sure everyone, you know, you know, four feet from their deck, basically, and you, you're up the same height, so you basically could wave each other in your second-story windows and your first-story windows. So, I don't know. I'm still struggling with this one. Uh, you know, I get, I get the context. It's about the same height. It's not, you know, you know, it seems to, height-wise, fit in with what's going on around it, but again, it's a bigger mass on the lot, and it is shy on the parking a little bit, and it's right up against the lot line. And that's by your choice. What's the deal with the whole twenty feet from structure to structure, Brian? What part of that table of regulations, does that not apply?
No, it doesn't trigger. That's only in the, in the residential, single residential district.
And we're in the business?
We're in the business. This is, you know, the, the thing, the, the other point is, so in the business district, which we're in, and where thirty-two Richen, Richardson is in, there's a zero setback requirement. There is no setback requirement. It can go right to the property line under the bylaw.
Yeah. Well, again, they're already there, and you're choosing.
Yeah, and not to say, let's do that, but I'm just telling you, you know, for informational purposes, that that's what the business district is. A lot of times when we do these projects, we abut a residential district, and that triggers different requirements. But this, this whole, this whole, um, area of both Richardson and West Water are entirely in the business district, all the way from North Ave down to Main Street.
Understood. Okay.
Um, Mr. Chair, a quick question. Now, it's in the business district, so technically you don't have to have any space, right?
That's right.
But we are asking for an extra foot and a half of height, am I right? Um, and, uh, shorten, uh, I, I guess, the left side could go right up to the, right up to the, uh, line, right? Because we're still in the business district on that left side.
It's all business, yeah.
But we're still one parking space short.
Yeah, we're half, we're, we're half a space shot. We can park a motorcycle, but not a car.
So, we're looking for some things that are um, need relief, and, you know, by right, you can go right up to the line, but in order to get relief, we're trying to get, this has to be, I don't know what the verbiage is, but, um, a benefit to the neighborhood or not detrimental. Um, certainly going to be detrimental to those people. So, we, we gotta work on this a bit.
Brian, has there been any communication at all with those people or the owner? No. No, I mean, except on the notice.
When those notices go out, do they go out to residents, or they go out to the owner?
They go out to the owner. Should go out to who's ever paying the taxes, Mickey.
If I may, I'd like to point, point something out. Um, one of the reasons why this building is kind of set, set back from the street a little bit, and so we have about seven feet foot setback, is, um, the power lines, the overhead power lines, which actually go underground right at that pole right in front of us. Um, they're actually high voltage, and there are some distances that we need to keep space between those wires and the building itself.
But Greg, I see your hand up.
Yeah, just the, um, the notices, do those, are they sent out certified mail? Are they, are there, is there a record of them being sent out? Just curious.
Uh, that, Gail can answer that, because she does the mailings.
Um, they are just sent out regular mail to the owners. Anybody within three hundred feet gets notified.
Okay.
Hmm.
But there is a record of them in the application?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's in the file. We, we get a record.
Yeah.
And do we know, if, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, um, do we know if those are condos or if those are apartments?
Hasn't been decided yet, um, but I think.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, the one in back of it.
Oh, I don't know. Um, I can give you a little detail. I can get an answer on that. One second, if I stop sharing. I'll tell you right now what, what you got. It's thirty-two, Mickey?
Thirty-two. Yeah.
I'll tell you how many units are in that building. Richardson's, it's Richardson Ave, right? I always get confused.
I think it's Ave.
John, do you have which street that is? Is it Richardson Street or Ave? Maybe, maybe Richardson.
Ave, I have it as Ave.
Thank you. Okay, because it's both, so I don't want to give three family.
I mean, not that there's a difference between rights of apartment and owners of that, but if I was a condo owner, that was in my face, I'd be upset. Um, rather than apartment.
Yeah, I, I believe it's, it looks to me like it's a, it's a rental building.
Yeah.
Seeing as we have to wait for TAC, Brian, I'd like to see, given the concerns I've heard from other board members, some special effort to outreach to that particular building, given the, the distances that you're proposing? I'm, I'm sorry, could you say that again, Mr. Chair? I lost you there for a minute. So, w- we've got to wait for TAC, right? Yep. So, we have time. I'd like to see the project team, either yourself or the owner, do some specific outreach to some of those neighbors, particularly that three-family thirty-two Richardson, to make sure they know what's being proposed, they know when the next hearing is. They're not, you, you know, you can decide how you want to do it, whether you want to drop a flyer at the house or send a special mailing. I don't, I'm agnostic, as long as there's an attempt to get to them. Good, because of my time here, I haven't seen something this close either, Dave, you know? So, um, I think we want their input, is what I'm saying.
What are we short for parking? Just one? Is that, is that what it is? One spot? Are we short?
Well, it's a half, he said, but it's technically, that makes it one. Yeah, am I right on that, John? It's, it's a half, right?
It's a half, yeah. It's required a sixteen and a half, and we have sixteen. You have to round up, so it's seventeen. Get one of those smart cars. This is like a hot car. They even sell those anymore?
Um, Mr. Chair, so, um, Brian, so what you're saying is the, it's in the business district. What's the height limit in the business district?
Is that? Um, sixty feet in a bus, in the bus, in the underlying zoning, Mickey. Yeah.
So, if you wanted to, you could put the biggest thing, you know, side to side, back to back, all the way, and taller.
Yeah, but.
Have trouble with parking.
Yeah, it wouldn't work. I mean, it wouldn't, we certainly couldn't do, we went through a residential building like that. We couldn't park it. Um, and, and under the, under the garden department, uh, requirements, I think the height is thirty-five feet for the, for resident, for this residential building. So, we're under that. We're not looking for relief. So, if a different type of building was going to go there, Mickey, it could be sixty feet. Um, but if we did a mid-rise, and say we did a, um, a mid-rise building under the bylaw, that could be fifty, but that would be five stories, but we wouldn't be able to park it.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be practical for this lot. It would be a, it'd be a, you know, a stick-up building with a couple of units on each floor, and the construction cost would not be practical. It wouldn't work.
Okay, I get, I, I, I was just trying to get all the facts.
Yeah, and that's what I'm trying to give them to you, you know? Love to tell you, yeah, we could, we could do a five-story building here, but, you know, in practicality, we can't. It's just, that's not cool. So, if, if, a type of hu, a different type of use could be, but I still think you're gonna have a hard time parking that. I mean, you know, how are you gonna do an office building of fifty feet high and, and put, uh, the parking on the lot? You're not gonna be able to do it.
Aside from the parking, we would be limited to thirteen units based on the, uh, area of the lot.
But again, you're already shy on parking with just eleven, and you've already heard us say it could be smaller, it could be further from the lot line, there could be open green space, and then you'd have enough parking. So, it is doable. It is doable.
Well, the problem with the dim, the problem with the dimensions, so, um, you know, just to kind of lay everything on the table with the board. So, um, Andrew, can you bring the pla, uh, the garage plan up?
Yeah, I can. Yep.
So, you know, losing density, we, we don't have a lot of room to shrink the, the footprint of the building, because, because you, you've got to have the width of the building in order to pocket for, for the maneuverability of the car. for for the maneuverability of the cars. So, you know, that's that's part of the issue.
From line to line there in the back, how much um like turnaround space? What's that middle lane? How many feet is that? That thing right there.
Was that twenty four, John? I believe we left twenty.
It's twenty foot, yeah, it's twenty four foot aisle with eighteen eighteen nine by eighteen spaces.
And you need twenty?
Need twenty four for two-way.
You need the.
We could argue twenty-two. Um.
Yeah.
You know, because it's primarily for overnight parking. I mean, I think we 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 hear the concerns of the board. We're, you know, this is not our first time doing this, so we're gonna we'll talk about it and um and let us work the issue a little bit.
Yeah, I I hope you try, because I do think residential is right for this, but you've heard what people have said, so.
Have you guys thought duplexes there? Does that mean you're gonna shrink the?
You beat me to it, Joe. I was gonna say you could do a different kind of development.
You you would just have you would just have two townhouses, though. You would lose you go from eleven to two. So, I mean, I'm sure you know, money-wise, that's not gonna happen for the developer.
Red duplexes, I mean, you you know, there's other things that could be done.
Yeah.
We've seen it on other sites.
I mean, this is the this is like the perfect spot for the multifamily. You 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 can throw a baseball and hit the train station.
Yeah.
So.
Doesn't that help you with park? Doesn't that help you with parking? So you're so close to the the train station, you don't you still need that amount of pocket, one point five? Oh, it doesn't matter, right?
Well, you can you can reduce it. You know, that's 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 your discretion. You know, we don't think we need that, but we we always try to park it. That's why we've asked for, well, being half a space short because um, you know, how close we are to the train station.
Yeah, that's true.
What if you didn't have that space on the other side? Could you could you could you work it so that lane would be? Cause you you don't have like a dual, you know, parking on each side, so does it still have to be twenty-four feet to get in there? I mean, I see what your your dilemma is. I'm just trying to solve a way out of it. I mean, let's say that one car, you see the separate car. If if for some reason that wasn't there. And there was another spot somewhere. Like whatever that crosshatched area is, I'm not sure what that is. Would you still need twenty-four feet? And if you didn't, could you skinny it up a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, these are all good thoughts. I think we need time to work. I think we uh we we've got to take a a kind of an organized approach, and I think I suggest that the steps would be that we're going to provide the um elevation that Kasumi asked for, so you know, to try to give the board a you know, somewhat of an accurate picture, and you know, instead of just kind of this two-dimensional look. Um, number one, um, number two, um, we'll try to do a little bit of a reach out is is um requested by the chair. And number three, let's just let us try to work it to see what we might be able to do. Um, but I don't think we're gonna come up with a quick answer on it tonight, but we appreciate the board's input and thoughts because, you know, I think everybody's working uh towards a solution to make something work, so. And we're 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 game for that.
Brian, do you think it helps to to put a small working group together? To as you come up with ideas, see if it makes sense?
Yeah, I always like that, Chip. It just expedites the process instead of us kind of throwing arrows in the dock, if you know what I mean. So, yeah, tha- that's a great suggestion if the board would consider that.
Well, so Chip is the uh as the guy with the idea.
Yeah. Why I was scared to say it. Shaking in my boots. Um, I'm hap- I'm because we can do it on Zoom now and and not have to always meet in person. I'm as they come up with ideas, I'm happy to have them run it by me. I mean, I'm probably on the same wavelength as everybody else is that there's no green space. There's it's too tight to the back lot. There may be too many units. You know, I I think I hear what the board says. I probably feel the same way. So if they're willing to work with me, I'm willing to work with them.
Yeah, it's part of the motion to continue them. Chip will uh will do that.
Okay.
I I can help all too if you need help, Chip. Um, I don't think this is that that big a project where it's gonna take hours at night.
No, I'm just.
The only limitation with that, though, Joe, is if we go to two members.
I was just gonna ask that.
We gotta advertise.
Yeah, I don't I don't want this to be advertised. I will do it if it's not advertised.
All right, you're on your own, Chip.
No, which is which is fine. I just having advertised them, it's the worst thing in the no no offense, but it it's not a working group. It's not a you know, it's not a pound your fist on the table, get shit done type of meeting. It's a much more I don't know. I I don't think it works, so. I'm happy to do it alone.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the board?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right, hearing, seeing none, I am gonna open it to public comment at this time. I'll ask uh members of the public if they're here to uh testify on this case that they use the ra- uh raised hand function in Zoom. And uh when I call you, if you could give your name and address. I see Tiana has a raised hand.
You want us to stop sharing the screen, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, at this point, please.
Hi, thank you. Thank you very much. Tiana Veldish, twenty-eight West Water, so across the street and a couple houses down. Um, I was curious uh first, do you know when you're appearing before Traffic Advisory? Um, because that would be an interesting one to attend as as well. Um, the traffic element of of this development is uh certainly a concern. Given.
The uh the street.
Traffic Advisory Committee has not established a date for their next meeting. This project team has reached out requesting to be on an agenda. So.
Okay, great. So we can keep an eye on that.
Yeah, and what he said, just so you know, his response was not scheduled yet, but hoping for late September or first week in October.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
I would just monitor the town's website calendar.
Okay, will do. Um, and my second question is whether there's any, um, I I recall on the meeting, the the most recent meeting you presented at about this project um that there was some drainage studies. Um, the street has a a fun tendency to uh become a lake right in the middle um at the lowest point, which is right around where where my home is uh during any heavy rain events and with even just a little bit less green space absorbing um absorbing runoff. I'm curious whether there's uh thought about what that might do to the the street flooding concerns and just if there's anything that um, you know, can be done to mitigate that as as this moves forward.
So you should know that all these applications like this have to uh work with the town's D P W department uh on drainage, on stormwater management, on all those issues. So uh you heard Mr. Ogren from the development team earlier. He's an engineer. He would work directly with our town engineer on those matters. And they do have um you know, the D P W will have comments. Um. And if there there's something that needs to be done to address an issue like that, they'll ask if we do end up approving something that we condition the approval with the expected fix.
Great. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. That's all for me.
Thank you. Anybody else here to testify on this matter? Going once. Going twice. I see nobody. Back to the board. Letter the board.
Mr. Chair, um, I would just clarify just that point when yeah, the stormwater management plan they've submitted, working with the town engineers, just for this site to ensure nothing.
Right.
It's improved or certainly no worse, but anything going on around it and other properties or in the street, down the street, that isn't necessarily mitigated by this pro- potential project. So just so the.
This property owner doesn't own every problem on the street.
Exactly. So it's really just managing what's on the site and making it better, certainly not making it worse, right? And that's what it's all about. Um, but yeah, okay.
I can just add, Mr. Chair, just for you, um, Mickey, uh, you would ask for a shadow study?
Yeah.
I didn't want to ignore that. Um, so we're just we're just kind of requesting the table app to see where we go, want to find, you know, and then you can determine if you still want it at that point, if that's.
I'm understood. I know it costs a little bit of money too, so.
So I just want to let you know, we didn't ignore you on that. Forget it. That's all.
I get it.
So two weeks, Brian?
Um, yeah, I don't know if we'll be ready to go with what we got, but we could just continue, but just to keep this moving, yeah, two weeks would be great. And this is all special permit, so you don't need an extension of time. So I think we're I think we're good in that regard.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chair, I move that we continue this hearing to our September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Seconded.
Most of the main seconded any further discussion?
Did you want? Did you wanna? Did you want to make me guarantee motion, I thought?
So I'm in the motion to also um appoint Chip Tarbella as um representative to work with the the team um in between uh our meetings um as as part of a working group with the applicant. So amended motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that amended motion.
Okay. Amended motion being made. Any further thoughts or discussion from board members? Guaranteeing none. Regular voting board members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, new hearings, case twenty-five dash nine at one forty-one Montrose Avenue.
That's my case also, Mr. Chair. For the record, attorney Brian McGrill representing William Kong and Chu Feng in owns a property at one forty-one Montrose Avenue uh in Wakefield. Um, um, they propose to do in addition to the rear of their building. We've submitted uh a site plan and architectural drawings in that regard, which I will, with your permission, share with the board.
Please do.
You. We go go with the architectural drawings. I I want to stress that the request here is uh solely a finding under one ninety fifty A. We're not seeking, and there is no need for variance uh for this uh addition that's being proposed. These are the plans that were submitted by O'Sullivan Architects. This is just the existing front elevation of the um dwelling that faces Montrose Avenue. Uh, this is at the um Salem Street end of Montrose Ave, not the uh not the um Palm Street. I'm I'm sorry, the Water Street end, so it's further down towards Salem Street. Just after the uh National Grid Building. And what they're proposing is in addition to the back of the of the house, pretty much staying in line with the existing setbacks. They want to have a courtyard here. As you can see, it's gonna just have a crawl space in the back. And they're creating some living area, an office, a bath. They've got the courtyard and a mudroom. This kind of shows the addition in relation to the house. And this is the addition, so this is the um right elevation. This is the addition uh going to the back. This shows the front, which doesn't change. You really won't notice any of this from the street. Left elevation, this is the front of the house. You can see the addition going on the back. This is the courtyard area in the middle. And the rear elevation. So let me go to the site plan, if I may. Great, so you can see the um red highlight in this. I think it's important to note, it's a one-story addition. Uh, so we're not dealing with two stories. Um, it's actually a pretty pretty straightforward, I believe, finding um for the for the board. If I can go through the zoning table, the minimum lot frontage in the single residence district is a hundred feet. This is pre-existing legal non-conforming at eighty. That's obviously not changing, existing and proposed. Minimum lot width is eighty. It's currently eighty point seven six. You go through the structure, that's not changing because the lot actually gets wider as you go to the back of the property compared to the front. Minimum lot area is twelve thousand. This is an oversized lot which has seventeen thousand five hundred and eighty-two square feet. Minimum front setback is twenty is required. It's currently thirty-one point two. As I mentioned, there's no change out front. That will remain the same. Minimum side yard um on the right side as you face in the street, required is fifteen. It's currently fourteen point seven. The it's gonna remain fourteen point seven, but the engineer referenced that the addition right here will be actually fifteen point seven from the sideline, but the existing house is fourteen point seven. Um, where the relief is needed is on the left side. The current requirement is eleven point nine feet. We just want to go the minimally like, you know, inches closer to eleven point seven in order to keep it square with the house. So that's the extension of the existing non-conforming, goes from eleven point nine to eleven point seven. Um, minimum rear is twenty-five feet. Uh, we currently have one thirty-six. It's gonna be one oh two. So despite the size of the addition and how far back it goes, it doesn't even dent the lot and what the lot could uh handle. As I mentioned, um uh, the the engineer uh made note that it's um one story. He said three stories are allowed, three stories are not allowed, as you know, it's two and a half in the single residence district. Um, I can get him to correct that, but it it's really not um relevant anyways. Uh, maximum height thirty-five feet, currently fifteen uh feet nine inches. We're not going higher. Um, and then uh maximum building coverage thirty percent is allowed. Existing is eight. This is only going to be a total of seventeen. Minimum open area required is forty percent, eighty-eight is existing, and it's still going to be seventy-nine percent open area um after the addition. In the coefficiental regularity, it meets that requirement. Um, so I would respectfully suggest that um although this is um extending the existing non-conformity, when you factor in the the distance that it's going in 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 inches, um it's not significantly um substantially more detrimental um to the neighborhood, because as you know, we could pull it back and comply. So, but it would just create a difficult architectural construction and just wouldn't look right not to have it balanced and match the uh the footprint of the existing house. So with that said, we're happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Before I just get to the board comments, questions, just very quickly. A letter from the Conservation Commission, uh co-agent Ellen Greland dated today to the board. The location of Paul's work will not render it subject to the commission jurisdiction. This project will not require further review from the Conservation Commission. Also memo from D P W came in late today. They have no comments uh on this, so members of the board, comments, questions?
Brian, what's up with the um courtyard? I've never seen that before.
Yeah, it's just an architectural feature that they they wanted Mike to be able to go outside in the middle, middle of the house and and to be able to have some really quiet, private space.
Okay.
Then often windows will look out onto that. It's kind of neat. Um. Brian, question. Why did this get sent to us as compared to Ben just a lot, because he can allow the continuation and but non-conformity?
Yeah.
Is there something? Is there something that we're missing here?
Yeah, because we're going closer uh on.
By those inches?
Yeah, by those inches. Said it's it's a it's an extension, so he cannot, this is not a a first-pronged finding of.
You want it to that if it does exasperate, not.
Yeah, because it does. It does.
Okay.
Because it's going closer.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
No, Mr. Chair, seems reasonable to me. The ask and uh seems like a nice project. I like the idea, as me he said, unusual. We I don't think we've seen one of these before, so. Interesting uh plan.
Anybody else on the board? Yeah, a great, pretty straightforward, yep. All right, I'm gonna open up the public at this point, um here to uh ask questions or make a comment. Please use the raised hand function in Zoom. And if I recognize you, please give me your name and address for the public record. I see uh Lyman Wayness has a hand up.
Hello, yeah, um, so I'm in Wayness, one forty-five Montrose Ave. I'm the abutter to this property. And um I just wondering, so I just obviously heard that there's a continuation, you know, you can conform as long as you're sticking with. And I just wondering, so I just obviously heard that there's a continuation, you know, you can conform as long as you're sticking with that, but it's a very tight spot between the two homes as it is right now. And with all the traffic that we have in Montrose Ave as it is, that backyard is kind of our safe haven. So if I'm understanding, he's looking to build an additional thirty-five feet back from our house that's only twenty-four feet from front to back existing. So now I'll be looking at a sixty, sixty-foot home, which is in my head, it takes away my open air. But the other thing I'm really concerned about is we have a high water table. Runs off as it is from all the houses up above. So is there gonna be some kind of water mitigation for this? Because that's a lot of roofline. I believe it's about, you know, deducting the courtyard, it's roughly sixteen hundred square feet. And I know in new construction, you need some kind of water mitigation. I'm not sure about this, but that's our biggest concern. That all that water is just gonna flow right into our yard. And then back up our basement as it's been, you know, three or four times already.
Well, I can address a couple of those comments, Mr. Chair, if you'd like. Is that okay?
Please do.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Wallace. I just wanted to point out, because this might be helpful. That, um, let me share the point again. So, Mr. Hatfield, you had mentioned at the last hearing, you know, the setback between houses. I think this is Mr. Wallace's property here. So what we actually did, you know, recognizing, you know, potential impacts. We did the measurements from his, his garage. And I think, Mr. Wallace, is this an attached garage or detached?
It's an attached garage.
That's what I thought, yes. So this is, this is what actually faces our property. But in any event, because it's attached, we wanted to make sure that we met that twenty-foot setback between the buildings, which the current building already does. We're twelve feet. And ten point nine, Mr. Wallace is. And he's thirteen point four, where his garage angle is here. And we're eleven point nine for a total of more than twenty feet. So the bylaw actually has a requirement that you have to be twenty feet from your neighbor's house. And this, we're not looking for any relief on that. This bylaw meets that requirement. Uh, as far as the drainage goes, we're gonna have to, you know, part of this is obviously a building permit. The building permit has to get signed off by the DPW, so they look for concerns that they might have and it would have to be addressed with it. But as you heard, there's no jurisdiction on wetlands from the Conservation Commission. And this is, this is only gonna be, this is not gonna be a full foundation. As we showed from the architectural plans, it's gonna have a crawl space. Um, so that, you know, I'm sure that will have less impact as well. I hope that, you know, answers some of
Well, crawl space, I can understand crawl space, but that water is gonna flow off and it's gonna flow off towards the edges of the house, not underneath the crawl space. And it's and there's a, there's a slope from that edge of that border where, where the two houses line up. There's a, there's a slope towards our house and then it keeps on going down the community. And I can tell you, uh, at, from starting from my home, it's just uh, you know, it, that's where the high water table goes. And if our sun pump breaks down, we, we're, you know, it's done. You know, so this is just gonna be a bigger impact on our sun pump. It's probably gonna keep on flowing constantly or after rain flows. Uh, you know, after it rains for days and whatnot. And so that's our biggest, that's our biggest concern.
Understood.
So, and I don't know if there's some kind of, uh, you know, I know in new homes, you have to figure out, you know, you have to run all the drains and put them under your own ground and get it in there. And I don't know if there's some kind of requirement for this, but that, like I said, that's, that would satisfy our needs.
Okay, so there's gonna be a process through the building permit. And so, you know, my clients will have to get a building permit. And again, that has to go through engineering. So, you know, they review this and, you know, my suggestion, Mr. Wallace, would be, you know, I can't counsel you, but anybody, I would suggest that if you have concerns in that regard, you should mention them to the Department of Public Works Engineering to ask them to give this a review when the building permit's issued in that regard.
Okay, well.
So, Mr. Wallace, to that point, that's not before this board. What's actually before this board is does moving the, the addition being three inches or whatever it is closer substantially detriment to the, is it a substantial detriment to the neighborhood? That's a hard case. Like, I, I don't see three inches making it a substantial detriment to the neighborhood. It's this is almost pro forma for an approval. In my mind, given what's before us and the parameters to make such a decision as this. So i- if, if your concern is water, I, I, you know, and, and runoff, that, that is a DPW issue. And I'm, I'm sympathetic to it. But I, I want you to understand what this board
I understand, I understand where you're coming from. I understand. And, and like I was saying, I had no idea that you can do a continuation of the property line. I mean, I was here to say, you know, you know, if, if you, I, I, I was always saying you have to go with the setbacks and what the setbacks were. And, you know, at, at up to date, but, uh, you know, and say, hey, you know, this is, as a, the previous case, you guys are saying, shaking our hands, you know, I could literally be outside next and, and looking through, uh, the guy's window. He could actually, my bedroom, my bathroom is right there also. So, you know, it is what it is. I understand what you guys are saying. So I'll just have to follow through with the DPW as far as that concerned.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to testify on the matter? Going once. Going twice. Not seeing anyone back to the board.
So, Mr. Chair, just add a, put a clarification again. When we saw the lot, um, you can see that these, these lots are quite deep, right? So the, the rear setback is quite large, right? So again, the homeowner has the right to add on to the back of their house. There's plenty of setback there, right? It's just what we're being asked to, is just that little bit on the left side. So uh, but anyone could do an extension on the back of their house. The, these lots look pretty deep al- along Montrose, right? But, um,
If, if, if we don't approve it, I'm sure they're gonna do it. And to, to the point that was made in the presentation, it would make it architecturally very awkward not to have those couple of inches. So I don't think anything we do at this board tonight's gonna prevent this from happening in some way. So we might as well allow the two or three inches to allow it to happen in the best manner possible.
Right. Agreed. That, I just want to clarify just. All right. I'm good.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Roger the board then.
Mr. Chair, I move that we grant a finding and determination pursuant to section one ninety fifty A, the bylaw. That the proposed reconstruction changes, extensions and alterations at one forty-one Montrose Ave, um, based on the plans presented, uh, Otten Dwyer, uh, revised, I believe the latest date was July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. And the architectural renderings, uh, from O'Sullivan Architects, uh, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Shall increase the existing non-conforming nature of said structure, uh, relative to the left setback uh, by a de minimis amount of a few inches perhaps. Uh, but we also find that the proposed changes shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conformities to the neighborhood.
Seconded.
Great. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the board? Guaranteeing none, regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
I vote yes. Matter's approved. Brian, I'd ask that you, when you find, though, we can't condition a finding like that because it's such a low bar, but I do ask that um, when they do file the building permit, if they could just make special attention to talk to the DPW about Mr. Wallace's concerns, uh, about runoff and so forth.
Mm-hmm. I'll tell my client.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Next up is case twenty-five, ten for three ninety-five Vernon Street.
That's my case also, uh, Mr. Chair, Attorney Brian McGrell representing John Mangano and John O'Neil regarding thirty-five Vernon Street. Uh, in Wakefield. Uh, this is a proposal to, um, raise an existing, um, single-family dwelling and reconstruct a new single-family dwelling. Um, this property is in significant, uh, a state of significant, um, disrepair. I think I can, probably the best way to start with this is to show some photos that I took today. Um, and no joking aside, I couldn't get out of there fast enough after taking the pictures because it's, it's, it's in really tough shape. This is, this is the front of the house. It's all overgrown. You cannot even see the house from Vernon Street. It's buried under trees. It's got trees growing through it. And, um, it's in tough shape. So that's one photo of the front. This is a photo of the side. You can see like the, it's just all caved in, the deck area. I couldn't even get to the back of the house. Um, that's how there's like an old abandoned pool back there. It's just so overgrown. I couldn't even walk behind it. So it's in very, very difficult shape. So just to kind of set the table of, of the existing conditions. Um, on this one, we also did submit an existing conditions plan um, as a separate plan. So I'll bring that up uh, and show the board. This, this is also an extremely large lot. This is right near the one twenty-eight ramp. Uh, it's a couple of houses down. So this is the existing plan and we'll have a zoning table that we'll compare, but I just kind of wanted to give you an idea of what the house is. It's really not too different from what is being proposed, as you'll see. This is kind of the pool out back, which is, you know, you can't even get to it. There's a lot of wetlands here. This will also, this, this will actually, this will require a filing with the Conservation Commission. Um, the DPW alluded to that for a drainage study. So this, because of the wetlands component here, this is gonna require a filing with Conservation in addition to, um, your approval. So now I'm gonna go to uh, the site plan. I think you'll see what Mr. O'Neil and Mangano are proposing is pretty reasonable for such a big lot. But again, a lot of it is wetlands out back, so it's limited. But this is a twang. It's, you know, as I said, you, you almost can't tell the difference, um, from what's there. Um, we've created a zoning table here. And to go through that, the lot area requirement is twelve thousand. This has seventy-two thousand nine hundred feet by feet. Frontages is required a hundred ninety-two point five, existing and proposed. Lot width, ironically, this is where we need the relief because the house is gonna be a little bit further back. It, it's off by a foot on the lot width because as you know, the lot width is measured through the structure. Um, the front setback required is twenty feet. Existing is thirty-five. We're actually gonna push this back to fifty feet. Uh, side on the right, fifteen required. It's currently twenty-nine point eight. We're gonna meet the requirement of seventeen. On the left, fifteen is required. Uh, the existing is ten. So as you face the house to the left, it's ten feet from that property line. We're gonna pull it away to fifteen point nine feet, further away from that neighbor. The rear is twenty-five feet and it's almost comical that existing is three hundred and ninety-five feet. We're gonna be three sixty-six. Lot coverage thirty percent allowed. One point six percent existing. It's gonna be two point seven percent proposed. A lot of that has to do with our circular driveway. Open space thirty percent required. It's ninety-six point seven. We'll have ninety-five percent. The height will be, meet the requirement of less than thirty-five feet. Two and a half stories is allowed. This will be a two and a half story versus a two-story house. In the front yard open area, we wanted to show that because of the circular driveway, we'll meet that requirement of sixty percent by one percent. That's sixty-one percent. Um, as far as, um, what's being proposed for the structure, because I'm sure if some of the neighbors are on, they'd be interested in that. And I'm sure the board is as well. Pretty typical colonial. So this is the front elevation. The right side elevation with the deck and the rear. Rear elevation. And the left elevation. These are just, you know, sample floor plans that, you know, the floor plans might change, but what we're showing architecturally is what is planned to be built and coincides with Mr. Finocchio's, um, site plan. So I would respectfully suggest that, um, especially when you consider that we're basically on this one dealing with a foot of lot width. Uh, besides that, there is complete compliance that it is not substantially more detrimental, um, than what's existing today. And exactly, I would actually argue it's substantially more beneficial compared to what's existing today. Happy to answer any questions.
So before I get to that, just, uh, confirming what you said, Brian. I have a memo from, um, Conservation Commission, just, you know, dated today from Elaine Greland, co-agent for the, the commission. The location proposes within two hundred riverfront area, which will render it subject to the commission's jurisdiction. This project will require further review from the Conservation Commission. Also got a memo from the DPW dated today from Eric Sherman. Sorry, got this late, so I gotta take it from my phone here. Um. We have the following comments. Recommended condition of approval. The project is located within a section of Vernon Street that is under roadway. Cut moratorium. The engineering division is developing a standard to allow road cuts and moratorium roads. And plans to present it to the town council this winter, but it hasn't been finalized. The applicant should work with the engineering division to determine what requirements will be made in order to allow any work within the roadway to be completed. Two, town stormwater management and land disturbance by law requires a drainage report. The project disturbs greater than fifteen thousand square foot of property on this, or disturbs greater than six thousand square feet within a sloped area of greater than thirty-three percent in any direction. The plans are not clear on the total disturbed area of the project. Applicants should provide a proposed grading plan to show potential stormwater impacts of the project and required to provide a drainage report. Number three, the existing site, a butt's an asphalt sidewalk to sidewalk will be impacted by a construction entrance, new curbing and connection of underground utilities. The entire sidewalk needs to be ADA compliant by the completion of the project. The DPW is recommending the entire extent of the asphalt be replaced in front of the parcel. The plan should be updated to show the appropriate grading to verify the sidewalk and driveway aprons and how they'll be constructed in compliance with ADA and Pro-WAC. Number four, the DPW requires that the applicant submit a sewer inflow infiltration fee to compensate removal of a four-to-one ratio from sewer system inflow. The fee is four hundred and fifty dollars per additional bedroom and is estimated to be four hundred and fifty dollars for the additional bedroom to the site. Please submit the INI fee. The DPW engineering is part of the right-of-way utility permit process. I don't know if you saw that, Mr. McGrell, that arrived very late.
I did. I did. And, and I, and I think the, the biggest component of that is the drainage aspect, and that's gonna be handled. We are gonna be doing a drainage, uh, study submittal with conservation, as you saw, the Conservation Commission has jurisdiction on this.
Yep.
So, and, and actually, under our, under our, um, land disturbance, um, by law that he, um, references, if you have Conservation Commission jurisdiction, you're exempt from that by law because it would be a dual filing. So, but in any event, the, the drainage concerns will be dealt with through the Conservation Commission in a study that will be submitted to them. And the DPW, because they'll review it also. As far as the other issues, you know, the INI fee, as you know, that has to be, as he mentioned, through the, um, through the permitting with the, with the DPW and not this board for residential projects of this nature. Um, and lastly, you know, as far as the sidewalks go, that's gonna have to be dealt with through them through a street opening permit. Um, I respectfully suggest, as you pointed out in the last hearing, that that's not a jurisdictional matter for this board with the finding.
Yeah, it's, it's a determined requirement. And if we, if the board is so inclined to improve, we can just condition based on the memos from the town department. Or ask you to, I guess we can't condition the finding here, so. Or ask you to, I guess we can't condition the finding here, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. But they'll, they'll make us do that as part of our street opening because we're going to be going through the street sidewalks. So they'll make sure it happens. They always do.
Yep. All right.
Mr. Chair, we, we, you know, we could make our decision based on, we could find that, you know, that they need to work with DPW and CONCOM after our decision to make sure that all those things are met, but they're going to have to anyway, so.
Right. It's a little redundant, but right.
Yep, exactly.
Comments and questions from the board?
None for me. Seems reasonable. Improvement to the site. Pending CONCOM and all the rest of it, but what's before us seems reasonable.
I'm good.
Yeah, one foot doesn't seem like a big ask here. So are there members of the public here who wish to testify or ask questions or make comment on this matter? So please indicate by raising and using the raised hand function in Zoom. I see a Lee Montgomery. If you could give me your name and address, please.
Hello. I'm Lee Montgomery and my husband is Christopher Hartman. And we are the owners and residents of twenty four years of three nine one Vernon Street. We are butters. The Captain William Green House, which is Wakefield's oldest home. This is per the town historian, and we have been on a home tour of Wakefield Homes and also the Hartsmore House. They've, we've called them, we're, we're members of, of that too, and we have called them for advise, you know, who they use for contractors. And they're like, oh, yes, you're the oldest. So we are looking forward to new neighbors and a better and higher use of this property.
This eyesore.
So I, I guess we just wanted to express, we hope that it's done sensitively. It is, when we moved in, we were told it is not in a flood plain. It is on a, a wetland. It's on the Sagus River, which is where it was sighted. Somehow people in the seventeenth century, they sort of knew how to site their homes. It's a passive solar house. It faces south. So it's not facing that way, but the back part is, the north part is faces this property. And just, just to express some of our concerns are when the foundation is poured, like how large it is, the soil densification of it. We have been involved in other Conservation Commission reviews of like Foster's Lane, where you, people are trying to build in what is known as Free Town Muck. And fortunately, we haven't had too many severe weather events, although Furnace Street was involved in one in two thousand and five, the so-called Mother's Day storm. If for those of you on the street that remember, pretty much every basement was flooded. The positive part, it was a communal effort to share like swimming pool pumps and things like that, but everyone had water in their basement. It, this was declared a disaster area by the governor. FEMA came out. It was like what you saw on television and things like that.
Yeah.
And fortunately, that hasn't happened, but the water is coming closer. I just wanted to say that if we can see it about twenty five to fifty yards out, there's water in the basement. So we just wanted to highlight that. And also, if you're, you're pouring a big foundation, you know, sighted on that slope, I'm just worried that water has to go somewhere.
So just like you've heard that, that maybe you listened in to the, the, the last hearing.
Yeah.
What's before this board is allowing a new structure that's one foot wider than the existing structure, making it substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. The water issues, the construction issues, those are things that are not before this board or under our purview. There will be discussions of that at the Conservation Commission. And at the time, and I'll make the same request of Attorney McGrail here, at the time here, when I go for a building permit, if they could just remind you know, the, the contractor can remind DPW that there was some concern in this regard as they review the building plan. So what's really before us is that one foot.
Right. If I can add just one thing, my concern, it's about how this, this circular driveway is going to affect, affect our property line. We have a tree lining between our home and, and three ninety five. And I'm wondering how that will extend into our, our driveway, our property line. And how that impinges on us. We have a picket fence in the back, sort of surrounds our, our backyard. And I'm just wondering how I don't, I'm not just going to, I, I didn't research the property line, but I'm just wondering how much that's going to impinge on us.
And show it again. Are you folks to the right as you face the property?
Uh, we're to the right, yes.
Yeah.
We're looking from Vernon Street back.
So this might help you, sir. This, this shows that the house, the foundation is seventeen feet from the property line. And so the, the, the curb cut for the right of way is pretty far away from the property line. If that helps you. You can kind of relate it. So the property line is way over here.
Okay. So yeah, because I had interaction with Joe Kernong, who's the owner, and he was saying extended.
He was the occupant.
Yeah, the occupant. And he and he said it extended into our driveway. I was like, um, well, I don't really think that.
It's since been marked. It's been surveyed and marked.
Yeah.
So I'm concerned about that. We have a tree line, maybe, I don't know if Brian McGrail went out there and took photos of it. He saw the trees on the line. That's, that's what we've looked at is the traditional property line. So I'm just concerned about.
So if, if, if the structure is seventeen feet away, the driveway is even further than that, I would guess it's closer to twenty to twenty five feet away. So I don't think it's impinging on your property.
Oh, good, good. Yeah, that's, that was a concern. So thank you.
Yeah, it's for you, Mr. Chair, for the Montgomerys, you know, they're direct butters and nice, you know, seem like very nice people. I'm happy to put you in touch with my client, the, not the new owner of the property. So, you know, maybe he can meet you out there and kind of walk around and, and, you know, say hello and get an understanding.
We welcome that. Thank you. That's very much appreciated.
Yeah, that's, that makes, makes common sense. So happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, anybody else here to testify on this matter? Going once, twice, not seeing anyone. Back to the board, pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chair, I move that we grant a finding determination pursuant to section.
Oh, hello.
Hello.
This is three ninety nine Vernon Street on the phone.
Okay.
Hello.
Can you, can you give me your name and address, sir?
Okay, three ninety nine Vernon Street, Daley, D A I L E Y, first name James. Uh, could you tell me the square, I'm not on a Zoom call. Can you tell me the square footage of this house?
Right up. Hold on. Here, wait me a second.
Like three thousand, it looks like.
Yeah, Joe, you got it. So you got fifty.
I just did. I did some prick math. If it's two floors, it's about three thousand.
That's great. Bigger the better.
Yeah.
That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
Okay, back to the board, Dave. I think you were about to say something.
I was, Mr. Chair. I can restart. Mr. Chair, I move that we grant a finding determination pursuant to one ninety six, one ninety fifty A, the bylaw that the proposed reconstruction and alterations at three ninety five Vernon Street, based on the plans presented with the application from PJF and Associates dated April twenty first, twenty twenty four. And the architectural drawings from KDK Designs dated July ninth, twenty twenty four. Shall increase the existing non-conforming nature of said structure with respect to the lot width, decreasing from eighty eight feet under its current conditions to eighty seven feet. But we also find that the proposed reconstruction and alterations to the site shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconformities of the neighborhood, based on the finding that the applicant will have to work with the CONCOM and the DPW engineering divi- division to work out things that are in their jurisdiction, separate from this filing.
Second, that motion.
It's been made. Second, any further discussion? You're seeing unregular voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Excuse me, yes.
Yes. And I vote yes, matter unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I may, Mr. Chair, can I give Mrs. Montgomery my, my phone number? Could I do that?
You still on?
Yeah, this is Montgomery. I'm going to give you my phone number if that's okay. It's seven eight one two four six nine 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 nine. It's an easy one.
That's great. Thank you.
Feel, feel free to call me and then that way I'll know how to get in touch with you.
Very much appreciated. Thank you. We want to work, we want to work with your, your clients. And, you know, maybe, you know, for the betterment of, of all.
Yep, that sounds great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Moving on, we are now on to other matters. Case twenty three fourteen, twenty three fifteen, twenty three sixteen, twenty three seventeen, three sixty nine through three seventy one Main Street, King Block LLC, request for extension and minor modification.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, the board's familiar with this matter. This relates to three sixty nine, three seventy one Main Street, the old Santander Bank Building in the middle of downtown, which has been permitted for the mixed use with residential construction in the rear and then some residential in the existing building. And then it was also permitted for a eight thousand square foot restaurant use. Here for two reasons tonight. First, we would like to request an extension of the time on the special permit. This is a very complex project in a, in a sensitive area. It's a unique building, unique space, difficult retrofit and build out, challenging demo in the middle of downtown. Which we're trying, my client is trying to market this restaurant use because it's a critical component to the financial feasibility of the whole project. We've been working with Erin Kakinder, Director of Economic and Community Development in town in, in that regard, trying to help us. We have a meeting set up with her. And, you know, to try to advance this to, to get the commercial use going on that space. It's coupled by the fact that we're, we have a lot of inflation going on, as everybody knows, and the interest rates are high, which we're all hoping that it looks like they're finally going to be coming down. So I think there's good cause to request an extension of these permits for one year. The request would be to extend them through November thirteen, eleven thirteen twenty five, to give time to get the commencement of construction of this project going. So that's the first request. The second request is, this project was permitted as a limited commercial use of a restaurant use. And my client's starting to get interest. That's a tough, tough space. Not to say a restaurant might not go there, but he hasn't had any luck finding one at this point. So we'd like to expand his horizons for other possible uses in that commercial space. That might include retail, service establishment. You know, maybe office or any combination of them in that space. The parking requirements are similar to restaurant when you calculate it out. So that's the second thing that we wanted to talk to the board about. The, the flavor that the, the board might have for making a change in that regard to just expand the opportunities. I've spoken to Erin Kakinder in that regard. She doesn't have any issue with that. One of the things that she did not want, we had talked about was medical offices. She didn't want that. You know, she was afraid it would be like an urgent care or something like that, that she didn't think would be the best use. So but we, we wanted to talk to you about expanding the possibilities on the commercial component. So.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, Brian, I have no, I have no problem with the extension. But I think we should know what the use is, and I think we might need a mod. I think, I think because this was permanent as a restaurant. You, you might have a butters that say, I was fine with the restaurant use. But if it was going to be X, Y, Z used, I might, I, I would have had a problem with that. I, I'm going to open up to board, but my initial reaction is to grant the extension and ask you to come back when you think you have your tenant. And we'll make a decision on occasion then, but board members. But I will say, want to see this project go forward. It's important that we get this done in downtown, get this space enlivened, you know. It's a good project. We worked hard on it. I think it's we want to be, we don't want to be obstructionist here, but. Oh, Chip, I'm sorry. See your hand up now. Oh, you're yapping.
Yeah, well, you yapped so that, so long that you took all my thunder, so I'm done. I, I was just going to reiterate exactly that. Go market it, go find out, and then we can figure out whether it needs to be reapplied for or not, and whether it's a minor or more significant. So that, that would be my, that would be my little opinion as well. But I have no problem with the with the extension, because I get it. I get their need for it.
Yeah.
Ricky?
I'm all for the extension. The restaurant was an enormous part of the approval of this, or at least the review of it. And enlivening that space in a beneficial, community, active way. So I'd, I'd like to keep plugging at it, but I vote for an extension. I'm good for that.
I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about the, the extension on we, when Mike's gym came to us a few weeks ago, or, you know, that product, they wanted a year. We only gave him six months, so.
They might be back. They might be back. So, you know, the interest rates right now are not conducive, as you know, for, for construction. So I've got a lot of clients in life.
I just, I just felt, feel that us, we usually don't do a whole year at, you know, at a time, but that's just how I felt from, you know, from the past past projects, but whatever, everyone else is fine with it then.
Just to differentiate.
Like a big jump.
Yeah, but just to differentiate, when Mike's came back, they, they, they still had some time. And, you know, so they, so it, it might have totaled like eight or nine months, but this is this is at the end right now because the one year is coming up in November. So so, and, and, you know, in today's world, by the time you find a tenant, right now, architects, we're talking, you know, months out for building permit plans. So I can tell you right now, you know, on this, six months won't work because by the time we find a tenant and actually get the plans put together and get the building permit issue, we won't, we won't make it. So.
Yeah, I mean, my, my opinion also is, Joe, that, that Mike's has no tenant vent, you know, vulnerability. They're not trying to find something to be able to fund the, the project. So that's why I'm okay with a year. So I, I, is this based on the whole project? Are they still going, do they need extension for the, for the apartments in the back or just for the, the restaurant? The whole, the whole project.
I think their financing's got to be dependent upon the tenant too. They got to have a tenant that's going to help.
Yeah. Right.
So they, they need that.
Yeah, that was up to them when they, you know, took the whole project on as a whole, but, I don't know. All right.
Yeah, I mean, the, the tenant isn't the majority of the project, right? They're, they're building a whole new building in back and, and making residential top. So a big part of this is the residential component, and the restaurant was a part of it. So I agree with everyone's comments that just expanding that potential use is not a minor mod in my mind, as, as everyone has stated. So I think we just you come back when, when you have something and we'll, we'll make that determination as a board, but yeah, I there's a lot of reasons you gave, Brian. I just, you know, the restaurant in my mind is, is a part of it, but you know, there's a lot of financing beyond the restaurant paying rent. Right? There's a lot of residential costs and, and part of this, but anyway. I'm good, Mr. Chair. I don't want to belabor this. I think, I think we're all in general agreement on the extension, but not the minor. I'm good, Mister Chair. I don't want to belabor this. I think we're all in general agreement on the extension, but not the minor mod, so.
Just want to make sure, if anyone else has a comment, I don't, I want them to be able to speak up.
Yeah, I mean, I just felt like you could start building, you could start the whole project. I mean, the project's, it's a two and a half year project, right? Two-year project. You can't find, I guess they don't want to, you're saying they don't want to start the project until they have a tenant in hand?
That was a goal.
And then that tenant's going to wait two years, so I guess they could get them in first.
Don't forget, you've got, you've got, one of the things that we did with this project is we lost a story on the rear building, and we put the units in the bank. So there's five of the units that are in the bank building, so, you know, when you're, when you're trying to rent into or sell those units, you better have already built out your commercial, otherwise you're going to have problems because you're going to have to, you know, you're going to have to have those, those owners or tenants living through, you know, massive construction downstairs. Because that, that is going to require a build out.
Brian, you didn't lose those units. We enhanced your project by taking that floor off. For the record.
Yeah, that's fine.
Touche, Mister Chair.
Well, the going's good. And I respect what you're saying on the, on the change. I get that, so. Point, point well taken on that.
Yeah, I think your client knows we want to work with them, but we gotta, we gotta know what's happening.
Understood.
Okay.
So, Mister Chair, I mean, there's no public testimony on this, right?
No, that's another matter.
So I move that we grant the applicant's request to extend the time for them to exercise their special permits granted on this project to November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Decided.
Motion's been made, seconded, any further discussion? Hearing seeing none, regular voting members, Dave?
I'm sorry, Mister Chair, I don't know if we also have to make part of that, that we're not granting the minor mod.
No, if we're just not taking an action, we're just not taking an action.
Okay, I just didn't know if that had to be a negative part of the motion. Okay, fair enough. Then I vote yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. You got your extension, Mister McGrath?
Thank you.
All right, now we're moving on to clerk board comments. Joe, you got anything as clerk?
No, all quiet.
All quiet, and what's Frank Gale, anything you want to throw in?
No, thanks. Can I ask? Can I ask? Is there anything I should bring for the town day, the Saturday, the twenty-first?
Oh, Kasumi, we should talk, because I've done it. Joe, you've done it, right? Who else did it?
I think every time I've done it, it brained out. It got postponed or rained or something. They haven't had it in a couple of years.
No, so, yeah, so Kasumi, we can talk. I did it one year. Yes, we did bring some materials, some like general zoning kind of stuff. We had bulletin boards. We're at the same table with the planning board. I don't know if it's going to be set up that way this time. But we kind of worked together and just kind of explained and had some presentation materials, just general info. But I've got some of that, and I did share it with one of the other board members who did another town day. It might have been you, Joe. And I can share that with you. I might even be around to join you. Is it the twenty-first?
Twenty, yeah, it's twenty-first.
Yeah, so we can talk offline. If I'm available, I can probably be down there for at least part of it.
Okay.
You're not flying solo.
Do I? Yeah, I was wondering if I need to like print something or like make banners or like, I don't know, sign or anything?
No, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mister Chair.
I don't think you got to go crazy. And Dave probably has some stuff. And Dave, my recommendation, given the playing board's recent history, that you get a table stepper from them.
Touche, Mister Chair, once again. Yeah, we can, I can talk with you offline, and I do have some materials. Yeah, just basic stuff. Some good info and some, you know, people want to.
Did you bake cupcakes?
No, I didn't. But that's not a bad idea. We had, we did like Post-it notes, and we had the people like put ideas on a Post-it board, and it actually, it actually garnered quite a number of different ideas. Some of them positive, some of them, you know, what's with all the building kind of stuff, but it was interesting, just, you know, any ideas, kids put stuff up there, you know, teenagers, like, what do you like about town? What's going on in town, you know, and it was interesting just to solicit feedback. So, it was just a fun thing we did and collected. We took pictures of it and gave it to Erin Kikinda. Just, you know, and I think maybe Steve now as well, just interesting stuff, anyway.
Okay.
Thanks for doing it, Kasumi. Thanks, Dave.
Excellent.
Mister Chair, just a quick, quick update for you. I've reached out to Mister McGrath, Attorney McGrath again regarding Noria. We haven't closed that loop yet. And the other thing that, that I reached out to him about in Jim's absence was that we went without a construction plan for Kevin Kevin and Forbes at the head of the lake. But they were supposed to come back every six months with an update. So I think, I think we're due for that.
Yeah.
And with as much as they've got happening, I think that would be, you know, and it doesn't have to be big and doesn't have to be elaborate, just a quick five minutes of where they're at and what their timetable is.
Did you or Joe ever get over to look at the mock-up panel?
I never went. I never got the heads up from Brian.
It's almost ready.
I don't think it's ready yet. I walked by it. It wasn't ready. They get the windows in it, but.
Joe, does the mock-up panel on North Ave need to be looked at?
It's at the same spot they're at. It's got the windows in it. I'm just, I just got to put the siding on it and it'll be done. But probably in the next month, it'll be done. By the time the building's done, it'll be done.
Just don't want that to slide off our list here. Okay. And anything else from board members? We can move on to approval of the very well drafted minutes of August fourteenth.
Mister Chair, I recommend that we approve the meeting minutes as, so expertly prepared by our Gail for our Wednesday, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Yeah, this can be done by voice vote. All those in favor?
Yeah.
Anyone against? Hearing none, unanimous. Thank you, Gail.
I move that we adjourn, Mister Chair.
A motion to adjourn is always in order. Same voice vote. All those in favor?
Good night.
Alright, good night, everybody.